The United States of America. Stand one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in thy name.
All right, thank you. Will the city recorder please call roll?
Mayor Jacobola?
Present.
Council President Steinhebel here. Counselor Conti?
Here.
Counselor Mann? Counselor Salvage?
Here.
Counselor McLean?
Here.
Counselor Rourkeman?
Yeah.
Thank you. We'll move into consent calendar. Following items are considered routine and will be enacted by one motion. There will not be separate discussions on these items unless the council is so request. In that case, item will be removed from the consent calendar and considered separately. Agenda Lebanon City Council Agenda, December 10, 2025. Council meetings 2025 11 12, City Council Gold Setting Work Session and 2025 11 12, City Council Minutes. Grants Submittel Resolution Number 23 of 2025 Business Organ Grant Application for Wetland Delineation. Is there a motion?
I shall move.
Second.
Motion been made to approve the consent counter. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Okay, there is no public presentations tonight. We'll move into public comments. Citizens may address the council by filling out a testimony card. And prior to speaking, you hand it to city recorder. Each citizen will be given up to five minutes to provide comment to the council. The council may take an additional two minutes to ask clarifying questions. City Recorder will accept and distribute written comments at speaker's request. Okay, so it's a little new here. For people who are coming up and speaking, the clock is actually right there. And you have five minutes. So we only have one tonight. Mr. Murphy? Come on up. We'll give you five minutes once you start speaking.
Sorry.
Once you start speaking, we'll start the clock.
Okay. I'll begin with what you all see before you. And that is Lynn County Board of Commissioners. And I spoke to two of the three. And they seem to think that that was a good idea. To LBCQ plus whatever. And they endorse it. And as a Christian, I do not. It's going to destroy our country if we promote this in Lebanon or any other city. It's going to destroy our country, as a matter of fact. I want to start in Leviticus. There's two scriptures I would like to give. And Leviticus 1822. Thou shalt not lie with mankind as with womankind. It is abomination. That means man lying with man. Romans 1:25-28. I'll have to go to that one. I'll start with 26. For this cause God gave them up unto vile affections. For even their women did change their natural use unto into that which is against nature. And likewise also the men leaving the natural use of the woman burned in their lust, one toward another, men with men, working that which is unseemly and receiving in themselves that recompense of their error which was met. And even as they did not like to retain God in their knowledge, God gave them over to a reprobate mind. In other words, there was no return. They were bound for hell. That's a sad thing. And we today are at a turning point. We allow these parades and all of this. And we think it's all right. It's not all right. God does not he frowns on these things. And it's up to us, as a small town even, to stop this kind of nonsense. And we have to even if we're not, don't know Christ as our personal Savior, we need, we must look at where our country has gone to. We started out as a Christian nation. And where are we now? We don't even pray in City Hall. We don't pray. That's a shame.
You have 16 seconds. If you have another subject Keith that you want to talk about, you can come back on towards the end of the regular session. You'll have another chance for comments.
Mr. Whitlock? Whitlatch? You I have a 10-foot easement on my property. That gives me four feet.
Keith, I'm gonna do you a favor here. I'm gonna give you two minutes since it's a different subject, okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
And I was not notified. Now, the city is the ones that did this, not anybody, not the government, not the state. And I called them. And it's the city that does it, not anybody else. I was not notified. And I was not given a written letter. And I want to know why I was not notified when it went from five feet to 10 feet.
I would have to see exactly what you're talking about. That's all platted subdivision where you live. We can't go in and arbitrarily take an easement.
Well, you did.
It would have been with the platted subdivision.
Huh?
It would have been with the platted subdivision? Back when they platted your subdivision?
No, no, it wasn't.
Well, I can assure you, we can't just go take it without your signature.
You guys do a lot of things that you're not supposed to do, but
Understood.
You get away with a lot. But I want to know, and I want to see the paperwork that allowed you to do that.
It should all be referenced on your deed. It should all be referenced on your deed?
It's not.
Well, I'll tell you why.
That's why I'm here.
If you want to come down to the office, I'm more than happy to sit down with you and we can work through that.
Okay, because I've got the deed.
Love to.
And it shows five feet.
There may be what's called a public utility easement there, but I don't have any of that information in front of me.
Okay.
So if you come down and visit with me.
If it's five feet, then I want all of that stuff moved back over.
Well, let's sit down and look at the plat and the surveys for that and see exactly what we've got there.
Okay.
Does that sound fair?
That's fair.
Okay.
If it's in there, I want it out.
Understood.
Either that or I'll tear it out myself.
Understood.
All righty.
Thank you.
Thank you, Keith.
You guys have a good
Merry Christmas to you, sir.
Merry Christmas. We have a couple more tonight. Ken and Miranda?
Thank you. How close am I supposed to be? So I don't have a lot to say. I'm hoping maybe I can, we can have a little discussion here. But this is specifically about the big uptick on the homeless problem that's happening on Berlin Road. And we realize that that is private property that is happening on. But we've, you know, we've lived there for several years. Anyway, and when we first got there, there was a real problem and we were kind of told how to handle it. And we got a letter from the property owner and we were able to talk to the officers about it. And it really got better. And within the last year or so, it has gotten substantially worse. And we have a real concern because I know that it's private property. And so there's different trespass issues and things like that. But it's starting to feel like a real security problem. I've seen bonfires and things that, you know, I really should have called in about. And eventually you just kind of get to a point where you you kind of are wondering what's able to be done and what is being done. And so I'm not coming at it from a accusation of, you know, anything not being done that should have, but I'm curious if there's any plans or if there's any way for that to be addressed. Because, you know, I know that it kind of feels like it's out. And so it's not right in front of everybody and it feels like kind of a good place for it. But when you live on that road, it doesn't feel that way. And when you can't send your kid to get the mail or take down the trash or something because you're worried about who's there, it really becomes a safety issue and it kind of makes you anxious and a bit angry about it. So I'm just curious.
Okay. Did you have any comments?
I'll wait for a moment.
Okay. Ron, I think our city manager can address that because we have been putting an eye on that.
Right. So which part of Berlin Road, like if you're coming out east?
Basically, the first mile and a half or so before it gets to the curves, the big curve.
And we're aware of that. Frank, have we contacted property owners in there to determine?
I'm not real positive on that one. I'll have to check. And I believe we have. Usually we're on top of those kind of things.
Yes.
But I'm not real certain about that area.
Okay.
Just so I know what you're talking about. Are you talking about the old carnival site?
Yes.
It's that, it's the ponds, it's even the section of road along. There's about every hundred feet, there's a trail and a camp that corresponds with it. And I know that they're up at the rock pit above. And, you know, I know it's, there are people and they're somewhere, but I'm just, you know, you get to a point where it starts to feel like it's all kind of being funneled into one area and you kind of have to.
We have your contact information here. Let us contact the property owners and see if we can get trespass.
So we have, over the years, we have been in, and we've gotten all of those.
Okay.
We actually helped facilitate getting that to the police so that they could have trespass. And they have trespassed people there in the past.
Okay.
So I don't know if anything has changed now that they're not able to. But I know we've talked recently to the property owner and he is still
Okay.
more than happy to have people trespassed for that because
Okay.
you know, he has the cleanup problem too, if it's basically his property.
Right.
Let me give you my card too and give me a call and then I can look into it a little bit more. I know we've been out there. I just don't know how recent. But I'm very aware of the issue out there.
Oh, I know you're aware of it. I was just kind of curious what the plan is. If we've got a long-term plan or a short-term.
Really hard when it's private property versus public and you have to have the cooperation and some work with the property owner to make sure that they don't return to that specific area. But I haven't, I don't remember the last time I talked to the property owner. But I'm not sure if my other coworkers have.
Ken, do you know how many acres that is?
So it's I know it's like 250 acres on the hillside, but the part by the river, I don't know, probably like 50 or something.
I think it's approximately 50.
Yeah, where the ponds are and all of that. And there's some, where the bees are is a different property owner. So they are two different lots, but.
Do you know how many trails are going in and out? Or is it just one main spot?
Along the road, as soon as you pass like the landing for the old bridge.
Let me stop you right there. Can you give him two more minutes since we're
I'll take my five.
Since we're doing back and forth here. So two minutes.
May I take my five instead? Because I haven't spoken, just him.
You know what? I let someone else do that tonight, so go ahead.
Okay, that'd be great. So I think it is approximately that, like whatever acres. I actually spoke with Mr. Bauer, if I'm pronouncing his name, actually as of last week. And I know as of April of this current year, he went ahead and filled out that form for no trespass and for people to be arrested. Signs have also been posted up that says they can't stay the night as well. And so I spoke with him and made him more aware of the specific larger camp that you're probably aware of that's over on the like south end of the ponds, I guess you'd say, which would be his property. So between where those ponds are all the way up to Brewster, there's at least three camps.
Oh, yeah.
If not more. And actually today, there's a new sign that says, I have permission from him and with his name listed on there, which is inaccurate. Like I said, I spoke with him just the other day. But as my husband already communicated, I'm surprised I'm not crying right now. I'm just kind of keeping it together. I don't feel safe at all, at all. And even your mission statement says to feel safe and I don't. And I know I'm not the only one. So again, we want to work with the system. We want to do it right. We want to be respectful. I'm going to stop before I cry.
Do you know how many people are down there?
There'd be no way for us to know, except for the traffic coming up and down the road, you know, like there's a lot of walking and biking traffic that you kind of assume is probably related. But you don't, I don't know who the people are.
Have you had any crimes committed against you by anybody?
Yes. Yeah, we've had property stolen.
But
or gate damaged.
Yeah, we're, yeah, we've had things, but it's there was, there was a time where it was really bad when we first got there and it got a lot better.
Yeah, it did.
A lot of it had to do with just, you know, we were more vigilant about calling. And we were actually told by the officers to go ahead and call. Because, you know, we didn't want to be that squeaky wheel that's like, oh, it's them again. And they said, no, the only way we can do something is if you call. And so
We want you to squeak.
Yeah.
So we They don't know if we don't hear you.
We did do that. It got a lot better. And then it's just kind of crept in. And just recently, we've realized that, you know, we have no idea how many people, but it's probably dozens.
The last council meeting we attended, the first, and this would be our second, was when there was a rule put in place where they had to have a place for them to be. And one of the proposals was on Berlin, as I'm sure you sometimes remember. And one of the things that was talked about in that meeting is if you see an uptick, to report it. And so we have done that, but we're trying to really announce that now. Also, people are bringing them food now. So we have cars coming, dropping off coolers of food, bags and bags and bags of food, unloading full carloads of food.
Dropping furniture.
Dropping furniture for them to take down to the camp.
Yeah.
Again, I don't feel safe.
And it's hard to be mad at somebody who's trying to feed people, but at the same time, you just kind of like, you know, just wish that you weren't bringing food. Maybe bring them to the food or something.
Yeah.
What kind of structures are down there? Is it just tents or is there motor homes or are they building structures?
I don't know. I haven't, you can see a lot more from the road now that the leaves are gone. There's one in particular that's just plywood and tarps and just various, lots of things going. But there was the other day where I went by and I should have called and I didn't. But I was just kind of tired. It was the end of the day. And there was a bonfire that was probably 20-foot flame shooting up. And I got out and stood on the bank and had my headlights shining over there. And the person saw me and started shoveling dirt on it and got it knocked down. And that's why I didn't call. And then later I, you know, I just think about fires getting out of control. So I realize this time of year, it's not like in the summer where it could burn the whole town. But it's still, you know, bonfires and things and kind of.
And I have two contact numbers for Michael Bauer on file, like I have it, not with me today, but I do have two separate phone numbers. He's very willing to talk to whatever, whomever, rather. He was not able to attend today due to just being busy. But I, hopefully he'll be able to attend in January if needed, but hopefully not. But I do have contact information for him if needed, if that's helpful.
One of my concerns is that if the police go down there and kick all these people out, where are they going to go?
I know. And that's what we're saying. We know people have to be somewhere, but at the same time, you know, more, maybe more visible is better too, you know, just for
Well, I think the key to that is private property, right?
Yes, it is.
It is private property.
So it's different than if they're public someplace. That's, I understand, I feel you're, and believe it or not, we all have that. I have private property. People have stolen stuff from me too. It's not quite as blatant, but I don't think they should be building fires out there. And I completely hear your concerns.
Right.
So this issue has been brought to our attention. We've talked about with some other property owners out there. So we'll get a spotlight back on it and see what's going on out there. Because I've seen them before along the road there. So thank you so much for coming and letting us know.
Thank you so much. I just have one further question. What do we do from here? So what's the proper
You have to be the squeaky wheel.
Yeah.
You have to call.
I mean, obviously the police, right? But I mean, do we just keep showing up here until a problem solved? Or what would you do if you were?
So I represent Ward Three. I would like you guys, if you're not around at the end of the meeting, you don't have to stay. Please email me all my, all my information's on the city website. And I will, I will work with you guys on that.
Okay, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Going to move into regular session here. There's no public hearings tonight. So first one tonight is Resolution Number 22 for 2025. Public Works Director, come forward.
Come on down.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Here before you tonight to ask for a transfer of appropriations and authorize a purchase of a camera, sanitary sewer camera launch, lateral launch system. With all the directional drilling we have in our right-of-way right now with all the fiber optic cables being placed in the roadway. Currently, our method of locating unlocated laterals or unlocatable laterals is to climb on the customer's roof and run a Jameson reel down that we can hook up and get a signal to identify where their pipe is. Either that or use a contractor to do what we're trying to do or do an extensive excavation in their front yards to find the lateral. So this piece of equipment will allow us to locate them from the sanitary sewer main while we TV and inspect and clean the sanitary sewer mains. In order to purchase it, we need a transfer of appropriations per resolution. It's provided for you there today and happy to field any questions.
Any questions?
Cameron, they can see around corners, basically what it is.
Yeah, it shoots right up, shoots right up the pipe, follows the fittings.
Have we seen other cities use this technology?
We have.
Okay.
All our neighboring cities. Yeah, everybody.
Any of her like excited?
Well, yeah, we, I just don't like having our guys get on people's roofs.
Roofs, yeah.
Well, we just, we just paid a contractor to do a section of the road street off of Elmore, which was, oh, I can't even remember how many houses, not a ton, and it was $9,000. So this
This will pay for itself in no time at all.
It's surprising to hear that the city of Lebanon doesn't have sewer cam.
Yeah, the Public Works Director made a critical oversight when he bought the camera equipment.
On that note, is there any other comments or questions? Will the city attorney read the title of the resolution?
Resolution Number 22 for 2025, am I off?
No, there you go.
Resolution Number 22 for 2025, a resolution authorizing the transfer of appropriations for the city of Lebanon fiscal year 2526 budget.
Is there a motion to approve this transfer? Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion's been made to transfer. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Resolution passes. Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, we'll move on to the city of Lebanon, 2026-27 Legislative Policy Platform Adoption. City Manager and our legislative consultant, Sean Tate, to give the report.
Go ahead, Sean. Take it away.
Right, thanks. Mr. Mayor, councilors, directors and team. For purposes of the record, Sean Tate with Tate Public Affairs, proud to be the lobbyist for the city of Lebanon. I understand you all have had, you all received the legislative platform document in the packet for the meeting. And I'm going to assume that we don't need to go through it line by line at this point. But I would like to make just a couple of quick points about this. First one is, I really think this is something for the city and the council and the, and the team to be proud of. We did not rush this. We had a, I think, a very thorough process with a lot of comprehensive feedback from a bunch of different folks at a few different levels. And I think we've created something here that's going to be very useful for us. And secondly, and lastly really, is that in so much as this is a great guiding document, it also needs to be a living document, right? I think we've talked about this before. Policy and politics change and priorities shift sometimes without a whole lot of warning. So have to be able to look at a document like this from time to time and make sure that it always is accurately reflective of our priorities. That said, Ron, do you have anything else to add?
No, I think it's a helpful document, especially with the lobbying that we're doing, advocating for the city. It just gives us some guardrails on where the city council wants us to focus and how they want us to focus. So I believe it is a good document. It'll be on the website for the public to see where our council stands on these issues. And yeah, I don't have anything further to add than that.
All righty, thank you. Is there comments, questions from council? I take that silence is a no. So is there a motion?
I shall move, sure.
I'll second.
Motion's been made to approve the platform. It's been seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes.
Thanks for your help, Sean.
Thanks, Sean.
Thank you. Thanks, everybody. I appreciate you. Take care.
Okay, we'll move on to the purchase authorization for the Lynx Transit. City Manager?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. What I have before you here tonight is a request to allow me to purchase a couple of buses for our Lynx Transit system. We had programmed $200,000 in this year for a grant. Ken Oliver was able to extend that and applied for two buses and got grants for both of those buses, which is what you see here. One is for a new bus to kind of help with our service as it's growing. And the other bigger bus is basically set for a replacement of an existing one that's kind of life-cycled out. With that, there may be a budget amendment coming because we did only appropriate 200,000. So if we spend that, why we'll bring that budget amendment. But they went through this with the state, through state procurement and got their three quotes. And this is what they came up with with Northwest Bus Sales, one for 137. And this is what they came up with with Northwest Bus Sales, one for 137,000 and the other one for 144,000. Along with that, you'll see that there's some additions with the cameras, the graphics that go on it and the different things inside the bus. So with that, I'm recommending that the council approve me to sign to purchase both of these. It's all grant-funded through state and federal grants, and I can answer any questions, hopefully.
You pretty much just answered, but I just wanted to make it clear to everyone else. This is not City of Lebanon money. We are getting this from the federal government and we're getting reimbursed for the money, for the buying these buses.
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. You are correct.
Any other questions, comments? Okay, is there a motion to authorize this purchase?
Motion to authorize.
Second.
Motion's been made to authorize this purchase. It's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Move on to the next item, Resolution 2025-24, Resolution Authorizing the City of Lebanon to Declare Vacancy of Ward One. Will the city attorney please read the resolution, title of the resolution? Oh, I'm sorry. Go to you first.
I thought I was gonna get out of it.
Yeah, well. City Recorder.
Yep, thank you, Mayor and City Council. As you know, Counselor Mann has submitted, under our city charter, that position becomes vacant tomorrow. Because Counselor Mann's position still had one year left, his term expired December 31st of 2026, council will need to appoint someone to serve the remainder of that term. Once the resolution passes and the position is declared vacant, we can advertise the vacancy and begin accepting applications. Our proposal is that we conduct interviews on the second meeting of January at the noon meeting. And if the council has an applicant that they choose, they can appoint at that meeting. And then we would do a swearing in the first meeting of February. If the position remains unfilled after six weeks, the charter does allow the city council to go out for an at-large position. And that would be somebody who was not just from Ward One. That way, the seat doesn't remain vacant for an extended period of time. Absolutely. Tonight's resolution simply formalizes that Ward One seat is vacant and it will be filled by appointment. And I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions from council?
So we're looking at that noon meeting on January 28th. Is that what you're proposing?
Correct.
Okay, just verifying. Thank you.
Any other questions, comments from council? Okay, now, now I think I can say this. Will the city attorney please read the title of the resolution?
Resolution Number 2025-24, a resolution authorizing the City of Lebanon to Declare Vacant the Ward One City Council Seat Held by Counselor Carl Mann.
Is there a motion?
Move for approval.
Second.
Approve, it's been seconded, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion passes. Okay, that completes our regular session. We're going to move into department reports. City Manager.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, City Council. Couple of things to report tonight. One, I wanted to kind of cover what our communications committee survey, some of the results of that. We had 94 responses. This is all in the human resources, human resources director staff report as well. But I think it was worth covering. We did the survey for about three months, got a total of 94 responses to try and get a gauge on what the community needs from us in terms of communication. We got some good feedback and what we found is most people use our website that really want to get information. So with our communications committee, we're trying to find ways to bolster our website and social media to where we're getting more information out. Email notifications, we've got ways that folks can sign up and get email notifications from press releases on various different things. And then, of course, word of mouth, but sometimes that things get lost in translation. I think one of the key takeaways was the demographics. Most people that responded to the survey, I believe, were in the age range of 55 and above. One of the things, of course, that they would like to see is, is a newsletter, an email newsletter. I can say that we've done that in the past. And what ends up happening is after about three months into a newsletter, you start to run out of material and it's, it's, it's not, it becomes non-effective at that point, at least from our experience. So I think the takeaway on this is we're going to continue to bolster our website, continue to push stuff out on social media. We're trying to get more people to attend our council meetings. It's kind of nice to see all the people tonight to attend the council meetings. It's, it's good to hear from folks. So with that, does anybody have any questions, comments on, on what we did there?
We found the quarterly newsletter at my place of business works pretty well. We considered that. I mean, pretty, pretty easy to get a mail, an email list and it's cheap, right?
Yeah, and, and we could, we could look at that. The senior senator does do a quarterly newsletter right now. And, and maybe that is something that we could, we could take a look at moving into the future. I just know we used to do them on a frequent, monthly basis.
No, I get it. We do the same thing. You just run out of stuff.
You just, you just run out of things that, that to say. And, and as fast as our information's coming, everything that we're putting out, it wouldn't catch, so. But we'll look at it. We'll definitely look at it.
Any other questions?
The only other thing I have to cover tonight is it kind of related to the houseless issue. We met with the owners of the Champion Mill this last week. Our police department has been out there multiple times, made multiple arrests for the trespassing and the stuff that's carrying on out there. So we met with these folks on, I believe it's Tuesday of this week, and had a discussion with them about the cleanup. They were asked to clean it up once and then it's gotten worse. And so what we came to resolution was that we would go through an abatement process. Basically, the city is going to go in and do the cleanup on this property. And it's kind of a unique property because as you all know, we're doing environmental testing out there, which kind of, we're in need to be out there. But the abatement process will also constitute a lien on the property for all the staff time that we use. The property owners have agreed to pay for the dumpsters to get the site cleaned up. I think Jason's crews will go out and mow the vegetation down, keep the vegetation down. I think this is probably the best long-term solution that we have so that we can see what's going on out there. And it kind of goes to your folks' issue that you have out on Berlin Road. We're well aware of it. And at, at this point, that's the direction that we're going. Just so if you do hear that, this is not the city doing work on private property for free. We will recoup those costs once the property is sold, so. Trey, do you have anything to add to that?
Didn't the city go out there about two or three years ago and do that?
We did. We did that after they had a homicide out there and multiple other things had occurred on that site that were unsavory. And we actually went out and cleaned that up. We did not charge on that because of what had happened out there. We don't feel like that's the spot that we can be in at this point, we, especially on private property. We need to make sure that we recoup our costs and it is the property owner's responsibility. I think they're kind of stuck in a rock, between a rock and a hard place and not having the resources to do that. So this seemed like the best alternative.
I was just going to clarify, they, they also have the option of just paying for it as we go, as they go. So it may not be a lien on the property, but it'll be covered and they're going to get a price, you know, that's probably better than anywhere else they can get because the city's not in the business of doing this. So they're just covering the hard cost, labor and that kind of stuff. So it's kind of a, it's, it's kind of a win-win. They get it for probably the least expensive way and we get to address the problem. And taxpayers aren't paying for it, so.
Having seen photos of what's out there, I assume we're trespassing folks from that property each time?
We are.
Okay.
Yes. The problem is, is they didn't clean up their belongings like they were asked the last time. And so these folks' belongings are still there, so they're continuing to go there. So hopefully, when, when it's posted, again, we've got to go through a process in the courts. We give these folks resources and tell them that they do have to clear their property out at that time.
Now, is that property easily accessible by the police department?
They can get to it from both the Cheetah Lake side there at the boat ramp and also there behind the new tractor supply. But again, I think what, when it was cleared the first time, we had a whole lot less issue out there, or maybe not a whole lot less issue. I, I think the issue still probably arose. This makes it to where it's visible. And it's kind of like when you're doing burglary type stuff, you know, you want visibility so that our police officers can see these folks that are out there most likely don't want to be seen. And so they're kind of hiding down in the brush and, and whatnot.
I think they barricaded the end of Burdell there.
Yeah, you can still get in there. You can still, yeah, yeah.
This, this solution, this model for addressing this issue has already been performed a couple of times by the county and it, and it works. It's terrible that we have to go to this level, but to, to fix issues, sometimes you have to think outside the box and come up with new solutions, so.
I would say that these property owners were, were good to work with.
Absolutely. They definitely are.
They're frustrated as well, just as I'm sure the property owners that were mentioned earlier are frustrated. I think the chief wanted to mention something about how the cleanup would go.
Oh, so, yeah, I mean, anytime that we're going out there and contacting individuals who are out there, we're bringing resources with us. So we bring second chance, all the local resources that we have and try to give them the opportunity to, to take us up on that offer of getting, having a place to go, having shelter and everything like that. So it's just a matter of, unfortunately, they just don't take us up on that opportunity. So every time we go out there, we do enforce the trespass. It's a citation to appear in court and we tell them they have to leave. They do leave, but like Ron has mentioned, they are able to come back. If their property is still there, they're going to come back. And if it's in a, in a place where they can hide, then that's where they're going to go. They don't want to be seen. They don't want resources. They don't want to obey the, the rules and regulations and that they, that they need to, so. But a lot of that is, you know, in the next time we go out there, we'll do the same thing. We'll bring resources alongside with us in hopes that they'll take us up on that and, and get the help that they need, so.
And finally, I know we want to move on. You know, these people get cited. They don't, they don't show up in court. They get a failure to appear. I mean, there are people that have 10, 15, 20 failures to appear. And unfortunate, well, fortunately or unfortunately, I don't know, there's no jail space. I mean, we're not, we can't, we just don't have the jail space. So they've kind of started to figure that out. And they certainly aren't paying the fines, so.
All righty, any other questions or comments?
I just want to say, I do appreciate that PD is working with services each time they go out to offer that in case someone does have a change of heart. I think that's really important and an important part of that strategy, so thank you for that.
All righty, thank you. We'll move on to items from council. Do you have any items?
I, this is, I'm going to show my ignorance because I'm not ashamed to. I'm looking over the report finance checklist. And for some reason, I don't know what, who Michael Nelson is that we give 237,000 to. It's in Brent's list, Brent's list. And I should probably, I would hope somebody does, but in his financial checklist, there's two different entries, 196,000 and 41,000, roughly.
I'd have to ask Brandon on that.
I think it's interesting you caught that. I saw the same thing.
Well, I just look for big numbers and I, oh, I get it, Pacific Power, I get that one, but I don't know who Michael Nelson is.
Anyway.
I have to say I don't either, so let me.
Well, can you find that out for me? That's a quarter of a million dollars. I'd kind of like to know what that's going for.
Yes, I will find out and send, send out an email to the entire council. How's that?
Thank you.
And I'm sure Brandon's listening tonight too, so he can fill us in on that.
I don't see my phone ringing.
Thank you for solving that mystery for us.
Any other, not that that's a one you just blow by, but is there any other items?
Okay, we're through that one.
No other items from council, okay. Did you have anything else? Okay, we'll move on. Is there any other additional public comments that need to want to be made? Come, come forward, Keith, if you want to, if you want to speak.
I couldn't figure out half of what you guys were saying, but when it come to the last part, why don't you make them go to work and clean up their own mess?
That, that has been tried and it, they don't want to work.
Well, I know, I know they don't, but you can make them work. Gingrich and Clinton, if they didn't work, they wasn't given anything. So it worked back then.
The, the, the problem is, is, is this problem, the problem of houselessness, homelessness, whatever you want to call it, is not one of lack of effort. It's usually based in either drug or alcohol addiction and mental illness or a combination of the two. I've went out on the, the, the operations out there at the, the lake and the way they live, no, no sane person lives that way at all. So there's, there's other issues. So when we go out there, what we try to do is offer them services like the chief was, was talking about earlier. We offer them services. We try to, we try all the time, DeLa, Johnson, all the community policing officers go out of their way every single day to help this population that's, that's living this, this lifestyle. And the majority of them, all, almost all of them, they don't want to change.
Yeah, but you guys give them the place to sleep every night. I mean, you give them incentive not to work.
You may want to address that with Salem. You may want to address it with Salem. We don't have anything to do with that. We, we have done what we are legally obligated to do as a municipality in the state of Oregon.
Well, I, I, none of this makes sense. They, they shut down all the mental facilities here in Oregon. And they, they built the one in Eugene, just out of Eugene. It was open for one year, millions of dollars, and it, then they shut it down. And a private entity bought it for zip, just about. And now they're all running around causing havoc. It, Oregon is, just makes no sense whatsoever. And we've had stuff stolen where I live. And nobody does anything about it. I've called the police. They don't, half the time, they don't show up.
Well, I, I will, I will come back at you and say, we do do a lot, Keith, on this subject. There's a lot of behind the scenes that the public doesn't see, the additional work that staff does, the additional work that Public Works does, cleaning up messes, the amount of time that council takes questions.
We pay for it.
Well, you're absolutely right. The questions that we take going out on, on some of these things to see how they're conducted, there, a lot of efforts put into this. We are trying to find solutions that fit the, the resources that we have. We don't print money like the federal government and we don't.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute.
Nope, nope, let me, let me finish. We don't, we don't get grant after grant for these, these type of things. So we find solutions that fit what the City of Lebanon needs to, to help with this issue.
But it's our money that you're using.
You're absolutely right.
And, and we work hard for our money. Even though I'm retired. Even though I'm retired, they work, they don't work at all, and they benefit more than I do. It makes no sense whatsoever, and you're wanting to take everything I've got to help them. Where's the logic in all of this? I don't understand this at all.
We don't want to do any of that, Keith. We're mandated to do that. We spend, I think, I'm proud to say, we spend as little money as we can do to handle the situation with what's forced on us from Salem. And that's really, what Trey said is the absolute truth. That comes from Salem. We're doing the best we can.
So I'm going to take the last three seconds here and say that the City of Lebanon works hard to help find solutions for this issue on many different levels. And for, if anybody out there in the audience thinks otherwise, I welcome you to run and sit on this council and answer the phone calls and all the other stuff that we do on a daily basis.
Become a Republican state. That's what you need to do, and get rid of all the illegals.
Well, I appreciate your comments, but your time is expired, so.
Yeah.
I look forward to the next council meeting, Keith. I really do.
I do, too.
Okay, thank you.
But I won't be here.
Okay. All righty.
Merry Christmas, Keith.
I've got to go somewhere.
Is there any other public comments? Please, come forward.
My name is Jose Jesus Amaton, and I've been living here in Lebanon for seven, almost eight years already, at the Fair Grove Mobile Home Park. I believe that that's out of jurisdiction because it's out of the city limit. But I have a concern, and lately, it's been worse with all the empty units that are in the park and all the drug dealers and drug users hanging there. I'm just trying to understand, same as the guy that was talking here, just why seems to us that, to us that there's nothing done to solve this issue with all the people that freely using drugs, freely selling drugs, and affecting the families. One of those families is my family. I find out that they just do whatever they want to do, talking about the drug dealers and drug users, with no consequences at all. Me, as a father, as a grandfather, have a family, and I know that my responsibility as a parent is to keep my family united, and those damn drugs are affecting my family big time. And because it seems like no one wants to do anything about it, at least it seems to me like that, because there's no consequences at all for that people. They do whatever they want, whatever they like, whatever, I mean, there's, people, I really appreciate they work, the sheriff department, too, but if they got arrested in the next one or two or three days, they are out again. And now they come to us, to the people that point at them or know what they're doing, and then it becomes worse for us. And hopefully, someone can do something about it. Our city, our families, our people, it's been affected big time. And I also wanted to say that when the police officers of the sheriffs, the sheriffs, recommend them to go to a shelter or get help, if they go to an agency or an organization that offers them a shelter, it's, they lie on the paperwork. I have proof of that because that is happening to me right now. They lie on the paperwork to make them qualified. That's not, that's not help. That is not something that will resolve this problem. And just try to find more solutions for this. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Jose, can I ask you a couple of questions? What park are you talking about?
Fair Grove Mobile Home Park, right next to the distillery on, as you pass Walmart, like a quarter mile after you pass.
Highway 20.
Yeah.
County.
It's county, yeah.
It's county.
Can you spell your last name?
A.M.A.T.O.N.
I wasn't going to write it down, but I know she did.
Amaton.
Well, we sure wish we could solve that problem for you. It's a tough one.
If you stay afterwards, I'm happy to put you in touch with your county commissioners who are likely the better place for you to make this speech, too. But while it's out of the city limits, I mean, just kind of dovetailing on also some of Keith's comments, I mean, our police officers do respond, obviously, maybe not to your mobile park, but I just pulled up the chief's report, and it's 1,254 calls for service, 65 arrests, 293 traffic stops. So I just want to clear that narrative from both recent comments that our police are not doing anything. I mean, they're answering calls as they come in, as often as they come in. They can't fix what issues occur in Salem. They can't create housing or stop addiction or add beds to behavioral health, so I imagine that's a very frustrating place for them to be in. So I just kind of wanted to clear that up for everybody.
Oh, yeah, and I really appreciate the work that you do and the sheriff departments, too, but there's not that much they can do, because they can arrest them, and then they're going to be free the next day. So I'm pretty sure it's frustrating for them, too.
I would imagine it is as well, just as it is for us up here, so.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you.
Is there press, any more public comments, or is there press in the room tonight?
[inaudible]
Okay, all righty. Thank you. Next scheduled council meeting will be January 14th, 2026. Wow, going to have to get used to writing that down. 6:00 PM, and then January 28th, 2026 at noon. Okay. So what we'll do is we'll adjourn the regular session, and then we'll move into an executive session. We will take a 10-minute break before I reconvene as executive session. So this one is adjourned.